Hello and welcome to another edition of the Get Growing PV Work Session with Get Oiling. I'm Coach Ashley, joined today by founder of Get Oiling Greg Kilwin. Hey Greg.
Hey everyone, really glad you're here today.
We also have Colin and Julie here for my team. Hey guys.
Hi everyone.
How's it going everybody?
Hope you all are staying cool wherever you are. It's a balmy 90 degrees in New York City today. Super fun. Today we're going to be talking about how to use the Boards app with Get Oiling. And we're going to have, I think, a little special mention here too. For those of you who are in international markets or you have teams in multiple international markets and you are a WhatsApp user, or you have a lot of people on your team who are, this is something that might be relevant to you here today as well. Big thanks to Cornelia Nicolash, who does have an international team, who shared some of her insights as to how she uses her Boards app and Get Oiling. And so again, it's thanks to you guys and showing us what's working now in the community that we're able to bring this information to you and show you how to use your software, your tools, working smarter not harder. So today we're going to be getting into how to use the Boards app and how to connect that with some really cool and updated features in Get Oiling. So without further ado, we're going to pop out a video and get into today's content. I want to welcome you guys into the chat. Say hello. Let us know where you're coming in from. And let us know if Julie and I are going to see you this coming week. We're going to be at Aroma Sharing, Julie and I are. And that's the first two days prior to convention. So it's Tuesday, Wednesday in Salt Lake City. Hope that we will see you guys there. And I hope you will take a look at the specials that we're running during Aroma Sharing. We'll be sharing more of those next week and definitely get into the Aroma Sharing Facebook group to learn more about that. Alright, so today we are talking about the Boards app and using it with Get Oiling. I'm even going to show you exactly how using Boards in several different places. So this is going to be kind of fun. Alright, so today we're going to talk about what Boards is and how brand partners are using Boards, how to use Boards with Get Oiling. And then of course, as always, we will get into live help and Q and A. So let's get started here. If you have questions here, by the way, if you came here looking for help, support with the topic, even if it has nothing to do with today's topic of discussion, this is an opportunity for you to get help in a live setting where we can dialogue back and forth in real time. You can take advantage of this by heading over to the Q and A. It can get a little busy in the chat, so make sure that those questions go into the Q and A so that we don't miss you here on the live call. And if you aren't catching us live, you're watching this as a replay, I want to invite you to head over to getoiling.com/weeklyworksession to get on the list. So you can join us on these free Zoom calls. They are open to everyone, all of Team Y'all. You don't even have to be a Get Oiling community member yet to take advantage of what we're sharing here on these Thursday sessions. We are live every Thursday at noon US Eastern Time, except for the week of convention, which by the way is next week. We will have a pre-recorded session and of course, any major federal holidays here in the US. If you would like to work together on a call like this one, take advantage of this opportunity as well. GetOiling.com/websitereview and you can set aside dedicated time for yourself on a call like this one where we can share screens, we can work in your account together, we can discuss strategy, whatever that looks like for you. This is a free opportunity to get that one-on-one strategic technical help and support. And if you would like to just hand the project you have in mind off to a qualified person to take care of it for you, we've got you covered there too, getoiling.com/concierge. Now let me know in the chat, do you currently use Boards? Is this something that you are using for your business? When I first heard of Boards many years ago, I was really impressed with the idea that you could sort of collect all of the blurbs of things that you might be saying in your conversations and your prospecting, et cetera, so that you are able to really go and conduct yourself in a duplicable way, right? The idea here is that you can take, formulaically, everything that you use in a successful conversation to move a conversation toward sharing, to move a conversation toward close and getting someone started well, right? This is something that you can take and give to someone else so that they can literally copy and paste the things that you would be texting or DMing or saying. And you're able to give that to your team. That's kind of how Boards started. It's very big with network marketing companies, Young Living obviously not excluded from that, but it's even caught on with larger sales organizations because duplicability of successful action is critical when you have an organization of people who are trying to sell a thing, right? Generally speaking, you can follow a formula or a system in order to be able to repeat, right? A good result and also to be able to assess what's working and what's not. And so using a tool like this is really, really helpful for you. Now, we'll get into more of what this looks like. I'll actually show you what this looks like and of course, how we will get into using it with Get Oiling. So let's get into this first. What this is essentially, it is a third-party software. We are not affiliated with them. We are not affiliates of them. We just know that a lot of you guys use them and we've gotten some really great questions as to how you can use Boards with Get Oiling effectively. So Boards is a software that is used to manage your shareable content. You can have it organized in a really attractive and very intuitive ways. And it essentially allows you to copy and paste links, copy or texts, and then of course, images from a mobile keyboard. So you can actually download an app onto your phone or tablet and it becomes a keyboard option when you're typing something. That like literally you press it and it will pop everything that you want to say, share a link, an image, et cetera, right into the field where you're typing, right? And then there's also a Chrome extension as well. So the Google Chrome browser has an extension where if you are maybe not working from a phone or a tablet, but from a laptop, a desktop, et cetera, you can use the software as well. This really, in essence, is a text expander, right? But with images and more, you can do a lot more with it than you can with a text expander. So there are not, so for instance, on a Mac, there are settings. If you go into your settings, I forget what the name of it is called, but you can actually create keyboard shortcuts. I think that might be what they call it on a Mac. Keyboard shortcuts where, for instance, when I type the at symbol twice, my personal email address is quite long because it's my first name, my first name, last name, you know, right? So that's a lot to type. So if I just hit the at sign twice, it pops open the whole email address. A text expander is like that. You have some that are built into devices like on a Mac. There are softwares you can download for this, but Boards takes this to another level by allowing you to use entire paragraphs. And the thing that sets them apart is that you can actually copy images directly into places where you want to use them, which is really, really cool. Alright, so let's talk about how we can use Boards with Get Oiling. First way to use it is by chatting back and forth, right? So texting, you sending a text, someone sending a text back to you, which is something that Get Oiling is capable of facilitating. If you have two-way texting with Get Oiling enabled, that means you have your own business phone number where you can send and receive texts. And you can do so from your Get Oiling dashboard if you are in the browser on whatever device you're using, or if you're using the Attract Well app, which I'll be showing you here in just a little bit as well. So it's basically allows you to text directly between your Get Oiling system and their phone. So to them, they're just getting texted to by you, right? You're there receiving a text from you, just you, not a group text. There's not 1,700 people in the text chain. It's just you and that person. And you're able to send and receive back and forth, just like you would if you were using your phone otherwise. And so it's just like the DMs as well on social media. So if you were to maybe, you know, get into Instagram and send DMs back and forth, get into Facebook, into Messenger, et cetera, you can chat back and forth using two-way texting in Get Oiling. It's that chat button that is available to you from your menu. And the cool thing about two-way texting in this way, where we're using the chat button, is it actually doesn't cost you marketing credits. So marketing credits are like an internal currency, if you don't know, with Get Oiling. And when you send out a broadcast, for instance, to 100 people and you're using a text message that's under a certain amount of character length, it's going to cost, I believe, four credits per text message you send out per person, right? So for each text message, you're going to be subtracting that from your marketing credits. When you're using this two-way chat back and forth with one person at a time, it doesn't cost you any marketing credits. It's great for conversations. And so what you're able to do using Boards with our chat feature is you can really quickly and easily pop in information, images, links, et cetera, from the Chrome extension. If you're using a desktop or laptop, or if you're using a mobile or tablet device, you can use that keyboard in your system in the Boards app. Another cool way that you can utilize Boards with Get Oiling is to better facilitate the movement of contacts into your Get Oiling system. So this is more, you know, speaking to those of us who maybe have historically been very text-based or very social media-based, or maybe you're using WhatsApp as a primary way to communicate with your team and you would like for more people to maybe utilize your member area or get onto your mailing list, et cetera. So what you can do here, and this is a really cool feature that Boards has, you can create pages in Boards. Cornelia showed me that she uses hers to create little newsletters that she can send out via WhatsApp. So you can create those pages in Boards for newsletters. But what my advice would be here, and I'll show you an example of this in just a moment, is to only include abbreviated information, right? So if your goal is to get someone to engage with you in a particular way, you want to make sure that whatever you're putting out there is facilitating that. So if you want people to come to your member area, but you're sending them everything they would have gotten in their member area via text, why are they ever going to come to your member area, right? If you're sending them everything via a WhatsApp message, why would they go and engage with your website, right? So include abbreviated, small bits of information along with a call to action for those folks to join or visit your member area, obviously including a link to it, maybe link into landing pages to get those people into your system, right? So that you're able to email them. Everybody has email, even if you aren't necessarily able to with, you know, if you've got a team in, you know, in Mexico, Panama, Germany and Belgium, you're probably not going to be using text marketing, right? You're probably going to be using something more like a WhatsApp. But you can, of course, everybody in all of those markets has email, right? And you can be facilitating getting those folks onto your email list using a system like this. So what you would do here is you would create those pages in Boards and share those. And of course, those have links to your Get Oiling site embedded in them with your contacts in WhatsApp, in your social media, DMs and wherever else you show up. So let's go take a look at this. First, I'm going to pop over and show you what this looks like on the desktop. If I could find that Chrome browser here, here we go. Perfect. Alright, so this is Boards and I am currently, I'm on trial as a premium member. I think it's $8 a month if you pay annually, but they do have free levels as well. I just wanted to make sure that I could show you guys everything here today because I have been playing around with it a lot. There is a certain limitation that they have as to how much you can share on a free level. So what I want to show you is I've actually got a board that I've begun building here. And then I've also got a board, or really a whole bunch of stuff that I got from the folks that run the 14-day reset. So if you are someone who's promoting the 14-day reset, I hope you have access to this. It's actually on the 14-day reset website, the link to get access to this board. And if you aren't promoting the 14-day reset, come on, get with the game, you guys. This is such a great thing to be promoting. It is free to you. It is for all brand partners and it's a really great way to share. So I'm going to actually incorporate some of the cool stuff that they're putting here to show you how this is done, okay? So we've got Boards. I'll show you here, we've got a prompt. There's our step one, our step two. So they actually have a whole system here that they're using. But maybe I want to send some survey pics. Maybe I want to use some infographics just to share with a friend. Maybe I've got some testimonials and look at this. We've got all of these different, we've got them in Espanol. We've got, we've got blood sugar related, we've got pain-related, energy-related, et cetera. Lots of really cool stuff in here. If you want to make sure that you are sending a message to somebody with information that's most relevant to them when you're sharing. Alright, so we've got our Boards. This is where you create or collect your content. I'll show you, this is actually an example of one that I started building. Actually grabbed a couple of 14-day reset things here before I got access to this board. I've got the monthly gift with purchase link. Highly recommend if you haven't done this yet for your market, get that monthly PV promo link, this monthly gift with purchase link and pop that into one of your first boards that you create. This is one of the most important things you can share. I think that those of us, again, to speak to the point I was making earlier, if you want to encourage behavior, right? If you want to encourage people to interact with you in a certain way, you have to do things that actually help facilitate that. And so many of us, every single month, duplicate the work of what Young Living has already done for us by just putting everything that's here into a resource that we're sending out as though people can't just click this link and go read it for themselves, right? Share this, save this, share this. It goes straight to the resource, to Young Living directly. Alright, so let me show you before I get into showing you how to use this. I'll also show you what I, this is a page, you can actually see this is a page here in your Boards app. And I created a sort of newsletter with it. So just a couple of really not very cute, but basic images from Canva and also taken from the Young Living website. So for instance, this came from that gift with purchase page and I put it into Canva and then put, you know, a newsletter sort of image over top of it. I've got monthly updates here. And so what I'm saying first is, get the exclusive on how to use your oils, et cetera. I'm trying to get people to go to sign up for the newsletter. So when we click here, it's actually going to take us over to this place, right? So our news and resources, we're getting them into our Get Oiling system. That's the very first thing that we're showing them. Sure, we are making a little page. We could make something like this in Get Oiling. But if you like the interface of using this, there's no reason to not. Just make sure that where you're driving the traffic from here is to your Get Oiling site, where you're actually getting them onto your email list, right? And into your member area importantly. Then here again, we're talking about the newsletter. I literally copied and pasted this information from the Young Living website. This, oops, this goes over straight to that gift with purchase page. In this case, I'm sharing in the US market, right? So I actually copied that image and created that in Canva. Alright, now we're talking about convention. Here's, again, this is just dragged straight from the Young Living website to here, copied and pasted from the Young Living website. Again, a link to the Young Living website goes here. And this is going to go to the Events Digest. I don't think Jane has any events coming up. Yeah, and so no upcoming events here, but if you are doing live events, you've got them on your website. You could obviously link here to that. So let me just open up the editor here so you can see how this was built. Super simple. This is an image that I uploaded. All you have to do is say, I want to add an image and it's going to allow you to grab something off of your device. If you want to include a paragraph, that's what I've done here. Add emojis to your heart's content, copy paste from somewhere else. You want to add a button, you can add a button. You can automatically have it send to different places. What I prefer to do here is to just include a link because we are again, sending them over to the Get Oiling website where we want to get them to actually get into your system, right? And yeah, so that's basically what I did here. So this is actually a great example of how, again, this is more for the folks who are very text-focused right now, who want to transition people more into an email-based system and of course, into your member area. And very importantly, for folks who are using WhatsApp, this is a really powerful way to get people engaged, to serve them well, but also to serve your intentions of moving folks over to a more cohesive environment, which would be using your Good Oil System, getting them into your member area, et cetera. Okay, so let's take a look at how this is used. Up here, there is a Boards extension, right? And this extension here is going to show you everything that is in these boards. You noticed that all of those, all those board resources that I've created that you saw here previously are actually included in this extension, right? So this is something you can actually get. It's for Chrome. But let's go take a look at what it looks like to actually send this from your Get Oiling system. So I'm going to actually pause my share here real quick. Just want to make sure I'm not showing any sensitive information because I do have to use one of our accounts here for chat. Okay, here we go. So let me come back over here and resume my share. Alright, so I am in, I followed the chat button in Get Oiling, which forgive me just a moment here. If I go to the dashboard, you'll be able to see. Right, so when you're in Get Oiling and you click this chat button, it'll take you straight over to a place like this where you can actually see your most recent chats. And so what I want you to do is to head over to your Boards here. And let's see, I want to actually share this infographic. So I clicked it, it's copied to clipboard. And so here I'm going to paste. And you can actually see it showed up right here. Now, in this same field, I'm going to go grab my little blurb. I am going to then pop my link in here to my version, so my website for the 14-day reset sneak peek. And when I send that off, that is going to send here with this image included. And how quick was that, right? I can go and I can find other things that this person might want to see. So I'm going to go find maybe some of those testimonials, maybe someone who needed improved sleep. And maybe I will copy this, or oops. Sometimes you'll see that a link will show up here. It doesn't always show up this way. Click off of the text field, the text input field here. And let's just come back here and grab that. It's copied to clipboard. And then we can come over here and paste and it'll show up there. So now you can actually paste images straight into your Get Oiling chat here. Again, this doesn't cost you marketing credits at all. Pretty, pretty cool, right? Alright, let me pause the share here real quick. I'm going to actually go over to the Jane account and show you how you could also use this to create content. So if you wanted to take, say for instance, you've got all these, this great content from the 14-day reset, but you want to send some of this stuff out via email, maybe you want to get over here into your content library under Saved Replies. Maybe I want to build an email out of this or something that I want to put into an online class lesson or want to pop it into a blog post or something like that. So I'm going to go over here to add. And in the body here, I'm going to come and I've put my cursor down here in the body. I'm going here to the Boards app. And I'm going to find the board that I want to use. I'm going to pop in that image. And it goes right in. How cool is that? It just goes straight into the field here. There we go. It's now in your system, ready to use. And then I hit enter once. I'm going to go back over here to the board. I'm going to pop in my text. I'm going to hit enter a couple of times because I want to format this well. And then I'm going to pop in my link. I'm going to go ahead just to make it cute. I'm going to change that link to a button. And I'm going to change the button text here. I'm going to go update. And here I'm going to probably shrink this down just a little bit because I know I want to send this maybe as an email. I'm going to align it to the left because again, I want to send it as an email. There we go. So this is now something that I can pop into any email that I use. And of course, I grabbed this straight from the Boards app. Pretty cool, right? Okay, so now I would like to show you guys how you can use this on a, on a mobile device. So let me, I did try this earlier. Let's see how this goes. There it is. Alright, fantastic. So here we are. We're in the Attract Well app, which I actually have right here. Here's the Attract Well app. The Boards app is also right here. So you can actually see the Boards are here. There's that one that I was working with previously. So I'm in the Attract Well app right now and I want to maybe send that same message. So well, actually, you know, I'm going to send the newsletter. So when I click that, you can actually see that that link goes there. We could also go to maybe grab this graphic. Again, I can paste. I can put in my information here. And of course, again, I can send it off. So you can see that this is actually a, this is a keyboard, right? So you can see I have on my keyboard, I have English. I have here, this is my Boards and I do have Japanese on here as well. But this is, this actually becomes one of your keyboard options on your device. And so you don't only have to be in the Attract Well app to do this. This works exactly the same as when you are on a regular device. So let me see if we've got any questions here. Happy to kind of show you guys how this works. This is, it's a really, really cool thing. If you guys have Boards that you would like to share with community, I think we should definitely take this conversation over to our Facebook group. I think that's a great opportunity for us to share in those resources. And I will show you here in just a moment where I went on the 14-day reset website. So you can get access to this board as well because this is something that is publicly available. And if you, again, if you don't have it yet and you are actively promoting the 14-day reset, highly recommend you get this resource. Okay, Allison says, do Boards work as well on an old iMac? I feel like there should be an easier way than going to Boards.com and then paste into GetOiling.com. So Allison, this is a Chrome app, right? So if you're using a desktop computer, so if you're on an iMac, if you have Google Chrome and you have a recent version of Google Chrome and it works on your device, then it shouldn't really matter what system, you know, operating system you're running or how old your device is, so long as Google Chrome works because it's a Chrome extension. And you do not have to go to Boards.com and paste into GetOiling.com. It creates a browser extension there where you just click the B up in the browser extension. Let me go back and show you that here again. There is a browser extension to where it's always right up here. It's this little B. So when you get started with Boards, when you sign up for an account with them, you will be prompted to get the keyboard on your mobile device, get the app on your mobile device and of course, get the plugin or extension for Google Chrome. So they actually do walk you through that. It is, it's very user-friendly. I did this yesterday or two days ago and, you know, it's completely new to it and it was very easy to walk through. And I would recommend both, right? Because you want to, that's kind of the beauty of this. And the reason why this is so powerful, it's kind of like taking saved replies from us and being able to use them on Facebook, in Telegram, you know, in your text messages and wherever, no matter where you are, right? And of course, you can use them in your Good Oiling system too. So if you're in your phone, you know, you happen to be out and about, you can send and say the exact same thing you would if you were sitting at your desk working. Let's see, can you share how we can use the survey they created on the 14-day reset board with our Good Oiling account so we can capture that info in our Good Oiling CRM? Let's talk through that after we go through this round of questions here, Krista. I'm going to leave this, this open if we are able to go through that because I'm actually not super familiar with how the survey works, but we may be able to hack that. And we 100% have a way to do a survey-type thing in our system. It just kind of depends on what the input-output structure looks like there. Okay, so that B in the top right of the browser is not, that's not the phone. This is, I'm on a desktop and I am sharing my screen on Google Chrome. This is a plugin, so you can actually, or an extension, right? So Google Chrome has extensions. There are lots of different extensions. This is actually a place, well, Chrome is a better browser than Safari. I'm a Mac user and I can admit that. But this, the extensions here, like there's so many that you can use, but this B shows up here once you've successfully put that in. And when you get started with Boards, it'll actually provide you with all the information you need to get that installed on your device. So yeah, same, same Colette. If you are on a laptop, you're going to be in Google Chrome. So make sure that you have the Google Chrome browser installed. And then once you sign up for Boards, they will walk you through, making sure that you have your, your plugins and the app and everything like that as well. So that'll work the same for you. It does, so it does not work on Safari. No, I lost an earring there. Yeah, it does not work on Safari. It is specifically a Chrome thing. It's a Chrome plugin. And yeah, so it's, and it's actually, it's worth it. If you work on your desktop a lot and you want to be able to use that easy copy-paste feature, then definitely recommend Chrome for that purpose. Yeah, yeah, so you would want to use Chrome on your MacBook or on your, whatever you're using. If you're using a mobile device or a tablet device, you don't have to worry about a browser because it's not a browser thing. When you're on a mobile or tablet device, it's an app thing, right? There is this Boards app. See, when you're here, like you've got your Boards app, you can open up your Boards app. See, when you're here, like you've got your boards app, you can open up your boards app. You can see all of your boards. You can edit your boards here. But what it allows you to do, what it shows you to do when you're using the app uh, is, and it walks you through it. Again, you don't have to be super techie. It will actually install boards as a keyboard on your mobile or tablet device. So that when you are going to type something, it's one of the options that you have to pull from, right? So um, I, I don't know, like how many of you guys are maybe multilingual, but like, you know, you have the multiple keyboard options, right? So if you wanted to type something in Cyrillic or in, you know, in Japanese or, you know, in regular, you know, American English keyboard or whatever, um, you've got those options and this provides you with another keyboard option. Okay, let me see if I'm missing anything else here. Um, I, Allison, I'm with you. Uh, I, I'm, I'm still grappling with the fact that I spent entirely too much money on a Monster Mac in twenty seventeen and it's already starting to look like it's aging out like faster than, than I care to uh, believe that it is. Yeah. Figure this thing would last for a decade. I don't think it's going to. Um, and I agree. Um, Chrome can be a little bit of a space hog. All right, Cornelia. Hey, thank you again. I started working with it about three weeks ago, started to create my own content, but also a board that I share with social media assistant to share. Ooh, I love that. So those of you who are maybe wanting to export some of the labor to pay people to handle social media for you, uh, boards are definitely a great place to uh, to hang on to that content so that other people can use it. Um. Okay, yeah, here, Colette, I'll walk you through that. That's, that's a pretty simple thing. And then Krista promised we're gonna go through uh, maybe hacking how we can put the uh, fourteen day reset survey into um, into get oiling. All right. So again, I'm, I'm in Chrome. And, and by the way, you can use Safari to access boards.com and log in and do all of this stuff. It's just if you want to be able to do that copy paste feature super quickly, uh, then you're gonna want to be in Chrome like I am right now because you've got this extension where you could literally just select this thing. Uh, and it will go into whatever field you're wanting to share in. Okay? So um, yeah, so let's just say here under customer education, I want to add a page. There we go. That's web page right here. And then you just start adding stuff. Right? So I'll actually show you what I did. So there's um, yes, yes, thank you. Okay, so if I go to Young Living, there's that PV promo page. I'll show you what I did to build this. Um, I, I saved this image uh, to, to downloads. Uh, so save image as. That is now in my downloads. And I've added that to boards. And actually, what I did was I went into Canva and I overlaid some text on top of it. Um, but I'm gonna go over here into images. Go to downloads. And would you show me? There, there we go. Um. And then you just pop that in and now you have an image, right? You want to add a headline, add a headline. Add a headline, add a paragraph. Add a paragraph, add a button, right? And then send them off to that gift with purchase page, right? We'll say shop now. Well, you have to enter a valid URL here. See, it's so helpful. You can't even do it wrong. Um, all right. So, but that's, that's how you build it. And then once you've got this created to your liking, and again, if you're going to use this, if, if your team is ninety nine point nine US based, right? Use text and get whaling, use the two-way chat feature. Don't worry about building these, right? Using a page like this is going to be most helpful to you if you are unable to use text, for instance, to reach your whole team. Right? Or you've got team in lots of different places. I would not even bother with this. This is just really more of a thing that helps to create a bridge between the way that you need to communicate because of the constraints of multi-market communication uh, and your good oiling system, right? Because it's not really um, you know, you, you can't really engage in text marketing if you are in uh, the US uh, and you want to communicate with team in, you know, Singapore, Panama and Colombia, right? Like you're, that's, it's not reasonable. That's why there's WhatsApp, right? So use this if that's your circumstance. Use a page like this. But make sure that the calls to action that you put here, send them to your good oiling system. Send them to a landing page where people get onto your, your mailing list because everyone in all of those markets has email. Right? And you get to decide if they're going to receive information from you, what that's going to be. You don't have to spoon feed everything from the living. You can say, hey, here's a little bit of what they're talking about, but we've got a better conversation happening over here. Come here, here's how you get access. And then you get them into your good oiling system and you are streamlining the way that you communicate, right? Um, so yeah, if you are US-based and you do not have a significant international market, or you're someone who's coming from having been a total text communicator, right? Uh, not using email, not using a member area. Um, that, there may be a use case for this, but I would actually encourage you to maybe just use if you are in one market and most of your team is in the same one. Just use texting with good oiling, right? And, and just use get oiling solely. Don't worry about this stuff. It's really not necessary. Um, if you don't have the international thing. Okay, so um, Krista. Let's go take a look at that. And do you mind actually um, maybe just let me know uh, if you are open to just coming out and chatting through this together because I'm, I'm definitely um, open to to doing that. So maybe just uh, go into the chat and just let me know. Yes. Okay, perfect. Um, yeah, let me pull you out and we can talk through this because I'm not super familiar with what you are referring to and I want to make sure we're getting to it. Um, quickly. Hi.
Hi, can you hear me?
I can, yeah.
Good.
All right. So this is um, this, is this something that's in one of the boards?
Yeah, if you go down to the bottom, I think they, they just added it and I haven't been able to use it, but then when um, because they were supposed to have a, a well, if you can click, can I see it on the main screen? That's usually where I see it. I mean, sorry.
Right. Yeah, let's um.
No, no, if you just go to the top of the board, like the, and it will show all of them on the screen. There you go.
Oh, yeah.
Now scroll bottom down farther and it says, well, that right there.
Okay.
And I just, I haven't actually used it because they just, I just heard about, about a week ago and then they were gonna have some type of board training. But it seems like it's a form and they say you can use it, you know, to get all these information. I was like, well, I already have get boiling. I'd like to, I don't want to have to put them in boards. So I don't know how it works.
Oh my gosh, yes, this is so completely doable. All right. So we're gonna use a page for this. Um, and you know, we can do, and I, I don't know that we'll be able to get that complete here today. Uh, but we can, we can turn what we'll create right now into a resource bundle that the fourteen day reset team can just give to all the good oiling folks. Um, because, yeah, because this is, the, the thing about this, and I've looked into this, um, it's cool that they have forms like this uh, in boards. Uh, but if you're a good oiling user, it's just goofy to use this because you know what all this does? If somebody fills this out, it just dumps into your email. There's no CRM, there's no automated response. Um, and there's, there, there's no place where it stays organized. It just gets dumped into an email in your inbox. Wow. So we need, you know, we need a system for this. So what are we working with here? We've got name, phone number, email required. And then we can kind of copy and paste, I think. Uh, yeah, I don't know that we're gonna be able to easily copy and paste what's here in the background. Um, but I wonder.
I wonder if, I mean, I think Tammy was the one that might have done some of this. I'm wondering if she just had the, the text that we could just put right over into your resource.
So I just copied a version of it into another board. And now I can edit it. Okay, here we go. This is where we can go to grab. There we go. Perfect. All right. Yeah. So what we'll do is we'll create. I'm so glad you asked this. This is such a powerful thing that, that really ought to be utilized and it's a feature that you've got here in good oiling. So um, all right. So we're just gonna create, I'm just gonna use a blank page. We really don't need a lot of bells and whistles here because almost everything is going to be in the form. Uh, we do need one. Um. We do need one uh, sort of section here at least because we need the form to display on the page. So what I'm gonna do, and let me actually pop back over here to the board. This is the image we're using. I'm gonna save that to my downloads. And then uh, we're gonna put form here in brackets because we want that to appear on the page. I'm gonna go ahead just to make this, you know, mobile friendly as well. We'll center that. Uh, we'll center this as well. And then let's pop in that image that we just downloaded. I suppose I could have just used boards here. I just grabbed that image from boards.
Oh, that's right. I forgot.
Right? Um, all right. So hit enter there to create some space. Okay. So now we'll go into settings. Um, this is going to be fourteen day reset survey. And I'm gonna go by link only here. I don't want to show the header and footer because I only want people to focus on the questions on the page uh, and to engage with that and not see option, you know, we don't want squirrels jumping off and, you know. Um, okay. So we want to show on the page. And let's go see what we have on the form here. Perfect. In this form, we're gonna ask a few questions. Perfect. So let me just copy what's here. And this will be in the lead capture message. All right, and I'll go ahead and center that here as well. All right. So that's that. And now we can go into our field. So required name, email and phone. And then we're going to have, I believe most of these are going to be long text. Um. So let me just duplicate a few of these. And all of these are going to go into past actions when somebody fills them out. So basically, we're just gonna go through and um, let's see, here we go. I'm gonna copy what's here. And we actually could. Oh no, this is even better.
It'd be nice if I can actually see that text. Someone was saying, I guess on the boards, it goes away when you start typing in.
Yeah, yeah. So the, the better option here would go, would be to maybe ask this question. And then instead of long text, uh, there's a list pick multiple. And then we can come over here and edit our list. And uh, and then we can, just close this out. All right. And then we can go in. So weight loss, inflammation, energy levels. Right? Um, so you could actually create a specific, they could check off as many of these.
That would be much, much easier for people. Yeah.
Right, right. So weight loss, mood, I'm only gonna put maybe three in here just for the sake of time. Uh, so energy levels, um. Right? So you could actually have them select as many of those as are relevant. Um. And here's another one. What other areas of your life are being affected?
This would be great to use that in a event too, because they could just fill it right out and you'd have their information.
That's right. That's right. And when they fill this out, all of this is going to go into their contact card. And it's going to have all of these answers that they provided. So if you wanted to give them a call, have a consult with them, et cetera. You're gonna have everything there in one place. And you also, so let's just say, for instance, after you go through and repeat these steps that I just shared with you, um, after they register, you're gonna want to maybe send them to the sneak peek page, right? Um, so so we'll send them to the sneak peek page. I've got a version of that here already in this account. Um, and this would be maybe a fourteen day reset consult. Uh, would be the tag. So anybody who filled this out is tagged with this. And maybe I want to send them a campaign that um, encourages them to pick a time on my calendar to meet with me. Right? So you could put a campaign right here that as soon as they fill this out, you know, you've got an email that's ready to go to them that says, hey, thank you so much for taking the time. Uh, you know, if you're anything like me, you've been through a lot and there's a lot to talk about. I'm here for you. Go ahead and pick out a time that works for you. You're not gonna get that if somebody fills something like this out on boards. Right? Like that's just, it's on you to get around to it. You know, uh, and so here they're in your system. There can be a drip campaign. Uh, there could be, you know, additional emails that follow up with education about Nisha and images of those. Like the whole campaign that you have attached to this is, I, in my opinion, infinitely um, more valuable really than, than even what you're doing on, on a page like this one. Because sure, you're getting all of their information here. Go ahead.
Would the form just be a page on our website?
Mm-hmm. Okay. Yeah. So let me show you what that would look like just with those three fields there. We can just go to preview here. And, and so they would have to fill each of these out. So, you know, we might want to modify this one just a little bit. Uh, but you can see all of these, they don't have, I haven't put the text next to them yet. Um, but the star shows that they're required. Um, if we don't love how that's looking, we could also just take this guy here. And um, because I actually don't really love the way that that looks. Yeah, that's better. Because it's, it's still taking up the field appropriately and it looks good on mobile. Um, but it's not doing the, the weird centering of those. So yeah. Um, you would go through and just for each of the questions that we're asking here uh, in the survey, uh, you can use these, you know, check multiple boxes. Um, you know, you know, and then you go and uh, you know, elucidate more on what those uh, others are. If you, you know, chose other. Um, yeah, you could do all of that here, goes into one place. And then, you know, finally, the important thing is, is that once somebody has filled that out, you want them, because they've got all of this top of mind, they have just hashed out everything that they are struggling with. And, you know, while it's probably comforting for them to know that there's someone who will be getting back with them, that they will be able to speak to if they're not talking to you right away. We're missing a huge opportunity. So this campaign that goes out, that's like, you know, hey, hop onto a call with me. Here's where you can schedule it. And, you know, while we're waiting for that time to come around, here's some case studies, right? That you can again, go and, and grab from boards. Um, you know, use some of these fantastic, you know, testimonials and stuff. Put these, use these to build your campaigns. Right?
Yeah.
Where you've got these testimonials and you can, you can just shoot them right in there. Um, and yeah, yeah. So um, absolutely. Uh, what we'll want to do is uh, is, is maybe talk about uh, turning this into like a little funnel that you guys can use if you're promoting. Um. For sure.
Yeah, I would love it. If you guys have a chance to do a, a resource bundle, that would be amazing.
Oh yeah, definitely, definitely. Yeah. Um, we'll make sure uh, we'll get something like this put together just based off of what you guys already have. And if you guys have more input, I, I'll shoot a message over to Tammy and see if, if there's anything else that she would want to add there. But, but yeah, I mean, this is the kind of thing that could go straight on to the fourteen day reset site. Oh, which by the way, I promised to show you guys. I have not shown you guys that yet. This is built on get oiling. Um. It's fourteen day dash reset dot com. And um, and this, guys, is for anyone who is a young living brand partner. There is no charge for any of this. Um, there is specific care taken to um, to preserve the integrity of any contact information that goes in here. They have a vault uh, where if, for instance, you wanted to engage off of Facebook or have your people engage off of Facebook, you can do that here as well as a great member area with loads of people. Uh, and again, just all the testimonials and stuff. But uh, if you want to share the fourteen day reset, um, let me see. Actually, where, where did I find? Thinking on a second. I have it in a text message. Um, and I will show you guys where that goes. Okay, yeah, it's the share the fourteen day reset. I'm gonna paste this because I know we're all brand partners here. I'm gonna paste this into our um, our chat. So you guys can take advantage of it. Um, and I'll show you here. Um. Here we go. So they actually have step by step here. If you want to use social media, you want to do other things. Um. Awesome, you know, step by steps. Um, and then what you want to do, and let me come over here, I believe it's the share your testimony or is it? Where was that? Here we go. Yeah. So under the share your story, that first step, right? Right here. Step one, prepare your story. Right down here. If you use the boards app, there's a link with all the prompts. Click here. You go here. You put in your email and you can join the board. All right. So uh, that's uh, it's gonna be a good place for you to go. Again, thank you so much, Krista, uh, for, for bringing that up. Do you have any other questions?
No, this is amazing. Thank you so much.
Yeah, sure thing. Okay, let's see. So we got that. Glad we got, by the way, that's awesome. Um, okay, Colette, you have a non-boards question. Um, I'd like help to set up an automation, create a landing page for people to attend a weekly med- medication defensive deficiencies, reset zoom class. Would like people who click to give me their contact information to get an email reminder and a text reminder that the class is about to begin. I'm doing all that manually now. Yeah. Yeah, here, let me bring you out real quick and we can talk through that. Um. I think you're actually going to be able to accomplish this, Colette, with a um, I think you're actually going to be able to accomplish this Colette with a, um. With a campaign, uh, unless the invitation is being made to people who are already on your email list, in which case you could. Have that email campaign be applied via an automation. So, uh, talk me through a little bit of this, um, who's being invited? How are they registering? Um. Yeah, I think you should be able to.
Uh, right. So right now I'm promoting it on social media. And I'm, but I'm also promoting it to my customers through my, you know, get oiling. You know, camp- campaigns, newsletters and just, you know, just regular emails.
Okay. Cool. Yeah. So what we would do, and let me. See if I can go get into your account here. And we can kind of go through some of these steps together. Uh, I mean, the bulk of what you're going to be doing here is accomplished with a date based campaign. So, um, let me share her real quick. Okay. So, uh, so yeah, I would start by creating the campaign. Let's see. So we want to give them a reminder, an email and text reminder that the class is about to begin. Okay. Yeah. So we'll create the campaign. And this is a, is this the title of it? Medication deficiencies reset?
Yeah, you can call it that. Yeah, I'm gonna, it's. Right. It's a long title. Have, are your medications causing vitamin and mineral deficiencies? It's a reset class. That they just created for us, which is awesome. Slides and script.
Awesome. All right. So we'll do email and our text because we're going to do both here. Um. So this is the name that you'll see. This is the name that they'll see. Um. Naming convention might actually be a little bit better here if we call this class for them. Right? There we go. Okay. So what we'll do here is, uh, create a day zero message. So, uh, so you're signed up. Right? And this is going to go out right away. Uh, this we will prefer email because they're probably filling this out on a, on a page. Um, so here, this is where we will, um, welcome message, um, reiterate. Date and time. Uh, and then we will encourage engagement, right? So this is hit reply, invite a friend. Et cetera, right? So that's our first message. And then, uh, we want to add another message and this will be, um. How far ahead are you offering this class? Um.
Well, I, I, yeah, this is where I got a little tricky in my head with planning. I do them twice a month. So the information is always going to be different. The date will be different. The same class over and over again. Yep. Twice a month.
Okay, okay. So. So you're doing the same class twice a month. Well. You could absolutely create the campaign and then just make a copy of the campaign for the date. So in this, yeah. So in this case. This campaign would be deficiencies, reset class four X date. Right? Uh, and so just make sure that you are being mindful of, um. Sort of the timeliness of the information, just in the, in the message, just so that you're able to reuse it as often as possible. So. Instead of, um, so maybe in all of them, uh, you're going to reiterate the dates, uh, and times in the, the day zero message. But in the subsequent messages, you might, uh, say our class is tomorrow, right? Instead of our classes, Thursday at two P M, right? So, um, so we'll say this would be the day before. So. Reminder, our class is tomorrow. And then again, you put whatever information you want to put in here. Uh, and then we want to do a day of, so. So live in an hour. And you put whatever information is that you want in here. So you may, um, so we'll say link inside. We'll make this the email. So we're going to email prefer on this one, put your zoom link in here. And if you want to do email and text, then what you would do is you would just add another message here and this one would go out. On that same day and that will be, um, uh, check your email for the link. We start soon, right? So that's in an hour. Um, and so this we will prefer text. All right. So then we want to make sure, uh, that we have these dates set up correctly. So this is also going to be day two. And this is going to be text, that's going to be email. And of course we can go in and edit the send times. So, uh, so let's just say for instance, when is your next class?
Uh, well, there's one tonight. The next one then is like July twenty third at noon.
Okay, July twenty third at noon is the next class. So that means that the reminder is going to be sent the day before. And that means that, uh, we are going to start the campaign here. So twenty second. Uh, is the reminder the day before. And then here's the day of reminders. Um, so now we have a date based campaign. We can edit the times. Here. So, um, we'll send this one. Uh, this actually goes out at five P M Eastern U S time by default. So this is fine for a reminder. Live in an hour. I know you're Eastern time. Uh, so this is going to be, um. You said they're at noon?
They're at noon. So I have to put it on eleven o'clock. Oh, I have to put it on ten o'clock.
That's right. Yeah. Yeah. So, so ten A M Central, uh, and then here again, we would do ten A M Central.
But they're not going to get the email, the hello, you're signed up until July twenty first.
No, uh, no, this day zero is send ASAP, right? They're not, so they'll, they'll get a reminder the day before.
That, that why I send down, you send them out by mistake sometimes.
There you go. Yeah. Um, but yeah, that's, that's essentially it. You're going to want to have this. And, and in some cases, you know, if, and, and if you're doing this on a, you know, you're doing this twice a month, I would keep this very simple. I would maybe include an additional day after message, right? Or, or if you're going to be doing the same thing each time, maybe you want to. Uh, send a campaign that's maybe encouraging them to fill out that survey that we just talked about. Um, you know, sending them to the sneak page, sneak peek page, et cetera. Create a campaign, a separate one from this one that does those things that encourage them to book a time with you, et cetera. And use an automation to attach it to this last message.
I don't, that's what I don't understand how to do.
All right. So we'll just go create a new campaign. So this is going to be a, um, a, a post-class invite to, uh, reset. And consult. So we'll say, uh, get started with the reset. Um, we'll create the campaign. Because this is going to be applied automatically after that last message, right? We're going to be using an automation to apply this. Uh, when that last message is sent, our first message, we're actually going to send on day one instead of day zero. Uh, because we don't want to send them a day after message. Yeah, yeah. So this is going to send on day one. And this is going to be, uh, you know, thanks for attending the class. Right? And then you put your other information in here. Uh, you do another one that's, you know, learn more about the reset. Here's some testimonials, right? And you build this campaign out for that purpose. Then you go over into your, um, your automations. And then you just create an automation that adds this campaign. So this is add to post-class campaign. And the action will be to find that campaign. Uh, oh boy, there's a lot of classes, um, reset. Post-class invite. Here we go. So we're going to add that, add the automation. And then we can go back to that campaign that we created, which was, uh. This one. No, it's not. You started creating that one. Here we go. Here we go. Now then what we'll do is we'll, uh, attach that, um. We'll attach that automation, um. Here we go. Add to post-class campaign. So that way the experience that the person is going to be receiving is. One where they get confirmation that they signed up, they get a reminder that the class is tomorrow. They get, uh, you know, the, the. Email and text an hour before. And then the next day they get, you know, hey, in the class, we talked about X, Y, Z. But that's not here. So you can actually repurpose this campaign. On an ongoing basis, right? Just modifying the dates, obviously remove anybody that, if you're going to repurpose the campaign. Uh, you, you would be better to like. Duplicate it, delete this one, right? And then, and then just continue moving forward by adjusting the dates and then attaching it to your, um. Your landing page that you're using, uh, but in any case.
The automation, when is, when does that start?
Well, so the, the, the date based stuff is strictly in what you've set up for the campaign's message being delivered. And after this message is delivered, one day later, right? Because it's day one. One day later, they'll start receiving the first message from this campaign. Well, no, because if you're duplicating this campaign here that we've created, it's automatically going to do this too. Right? So that other campaign that we created that's going to drip out information, that's actually an evergreen campaign. That you're attaching to the end of this date based one. Does that make sense?
It does. And the other campaign, what, what day did we start that on? Do we have to choose a day or was that just ASAP? Or was that day two or something?
Day one. It's, yeah, it's just going out on day one. So one day after this automation is applying that campaign. Because if we, if we go to the campaign, um, the, the campaign actually begins on day one.
Okay. So I don't have to put dates in there.
Nope. You don't.
For a system to do this and I wasn't using it. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. This, this campaign is going to be useful to you every, like twice a month, every month in perpetuity. Right? And it's going to be applied only after, like only the day after that class is finished because of how you've got that. Attached to this final message in the date based campaign.
Okay. Well, so the, when you check. Uh, like when you say email preferred, what, what happens if they're not signed up for email? Like if they've opted out?
They would get a text instead if you have, um, a phone number for them.
Okay. So it is better to, to check email preferred or text preferred because it would. Do the, do a backup thing and go to the other way to communicate.
Yeah. If, if you tend to have email and text and have people opted into both email and text.
Yeah, that's my problem. That's my thing. Yeah.
Yeah. And I mean, you can make sure that on the landing page, for instance, where people are signing up for this class, that you require both email and text. Uh, but if you're using the preferred setting here, uh, then, um, you know, it, it'll send, it'll try email first. But if it doesn't like make it through, it'll go text and same for text. If for whatever reason, the text doesn't send, it'll go for email.
The reason I didn't do that is because if you send an email, it's only one marketing credit. If you try to send an email and it switches to text, then you're charged a lot, right? A lot more.
Uh, depending on what's in the text message, um, and the volume of it, it's, I mean, generally speaking, and Greg, correct me if I'm wrong. If, um, if, if you have something that's written like an email and it's being sent out via a text. Um, it's generally going to have the minimum amount of, of sort of verbiage there, I think, to be a single text message. So a single SMS depending on your market, I believe it's four credits in the U S. Uh, and that's going to, uh, say yada, 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 click here to read more. And then it's going to take them to where they can read the rest of the email in sort of like a temporary webpage thing on your site that'll display that.
They should be kept short for that reason. Otherwise.
Well, actually, no, no, I, I think that, um, the, no, it's, it's not going to dump all of the email contents out into a text message. It's going to, it's going to have maybe the first sentence or something and then it'll say click here to read more. Yeah, it, but it is fundamentally, an, an email credit is one. One credit per person per email, right? Uh, whereas text can be a lot more than that, depending on whether or not it's a SMS and M M S. Does it have?
Right. Since I didn't know what I was being charged, I was only doing like email only. I, I have text campaigns that I know I. I know what I'm paying, you know, forty dollars per credit because I put it in, or per person, because I'm putting in an image. But, but I didn't want to be having a lot of these, like unknown texts going out to lots of people with.
Yeah, yeah. So you could absolutely just go email only if, if that's the case and then text only. You could do that for sure. Um.
Well, but some people have opt, opted into one or the other and so they're, they're not giving that.
Yeah, 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 yeah. For sure, for sure.
Okay. Well, that's, that's great questions. That's very helpful. Um.
Good. Glad we could help.
They're going to try to do that for me.
Of course. Thanks for coming out. All right. Just a couple more questions here. We're going to hit the road. Thank you guys so much again for all these great questions. Uh, Paula Baron, if you would like a one-on-one consult, I would highly recommend that you, uh, go to, uh, get oiling dot com slash concierge. Share a little bit more about what you're looking for, uh, and then we can actually get you set up with the right person with the expertise. That you need. Uh, we're certainly excited to chat with you. Okay. Why would you want to create another campaign instead of just adding it to the class campaign? So in this case, Allison, because she's going to be reusing a version of that campaign every single, uh, month, multiple times per month. It makes sense for the part of the campaign that is variable, which is going to be the date that, uh, that the class is happening. And the date before, um, that, that be something that we isolate from the static parts of the campaign, which are the. Information that we share after the class is over. So that after the class is over, set of emails. We could attach to any class in theory that we use in the future. So. Instead of going through the trouble of building out this same campaign month over month over month. Uh, and I have, having all of those additional messages and worrying about what dates they send on, et cetera. You can simply have this, uh, sort of isolated modular component of communication, which would be everything that you would want to say after a class. Which again, we can make that a lot more generic and it can be for, used for any class. And you've just saved yourself a boatload of time in the future by just connecting that to the date based campaign, right? So it's always going to deliver when you want it to, dripped out at intervals after the fact. Um, but you don't have to go through, uh, that same volume of work every single time. That's why I would recommend doing that. Okay. Uh, since you have an email preferred and a text preferred message, don't you have to add the automation to both? Messages. Uh, so they're both sending. So, um, the campaign is going to be applied to the contact regardless. So when it sends, it's going to apply that automation, which is going to start sending, uh, that campaign. Great questions today, you guys. All right. Let me see. Did I miss anything else? How did I just go full screen? Did not mean to do that. Anything. Awesome. All right. Here we go. All right. Thank you guys for sticking around. Uh, it's always so great hanging out with you. Remember we will not be live. Uh, next week we will be, Julie and I will be at, uh, aroma sharing, uh, and then I will be on a plane during our normally scheduled. Uh, hours here. Uh, so I hope that you guys have safe travels. Um, if you are not attending convention in person. Please plan to do it next year. It is such a good thing to do for your business. Uh, and then of course, uh, you know, attend virtually. If that's an option for you, encourage your team to do the same. Uh, we will be, um, back here, uh, in two weeks live, but be, definitely be on the lookout for a, um. For an email from us, uh, this coming week, sharing all of the information about our pre-recorded training, which you don't want to miss. Uh, that will be coming out next Thursday at the same time as we normally show up here. I hope you guys have a great week and I would look forward to seeing you in person next week. And of course, live here again into, take care everybody. Have a good week.